Good evening and welcome to the August 14th North Andover Select Board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to stand with me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move into public comment and per the select board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the select board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anybody here for public comment? Great. Makes it easy. And so we are going to move right into licensing, so I will take a motion.
Chairman, move to open a meeting in the North Andover Licensing Commission.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Over to you.
Our first item is number, section A. An application from Karen M. Jeffrey Bramwell of Fairways on High LLC for an alcoholic beverage, restaurant, liquor license, and entertainment license at 15 High Street. Is anyone there? Is anyone from? Okay, come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Karen Jeffrey Bramwell? From Fairways on High.
Okay.
So a quick opening?
Yep.
Okay, so Fairways on High, we're trying to open our facility late fall. We are an indoor golf simulator company, high-end golf simulators, offering food and hopefully adult beverages. We have about a 6,000 square foot facility. My partner, Michael, and I have been working on it since April and we're here to look for a liquor license.
And how long have you, is this a new business venture?
This is a brand-new business. Both Michael and I are both business owners. I've been in the insurance agency for 22 years, owned an insurance agency right here in North Andover. Michael's a master electrician who owns his own company as well, 25 years as a owner. I've had restaurant and bartending experience. We come to the table with a slew of certifications, including tip certification, choke certification, allergy, and so forth. Our mission is to open up a facility that's going to enhance the community and bring every age and every skill and ability to be able to play golf, whether you know how to golf or not, to be able to serve alcohol to our patrons and our golfers. We have a very small menu of food that's going to consist of salsa and chips, warm pretzels with cheese.
I just got a message that the front door is locked.
Turkey roll-ups and meatball subs. We're going to accompany that by having QR codes at all of our tables that will allow our patrons and golfers to be able to scan. Our local restaurants to bring in food because we understand that food needs to be available at all times. One in particular will be Stachis, who will be offering their menu to us as well.
And you've applied for the, your certificate of occupancy, but that's still pending?
Yes. We have a few small items that are left. Michael might be able to answer them better for me, but we made a lot of progress this week. We had a little bit of a delay on the fire alarm, although the fire alarm permit was issued and approved today. But we are at full, can you explain it a little bit better for me? So we have our life?
Life safety.
Life safety.
We haven't had the fire alarm work done yet.
You have to stand in volume, please.
The fire alarm work is being, I believe, started Monday or Tuesday. I didn't get confirmation from the manager, but the permit was pulled today. We have stamped engineer drawings and the company that got the engineer drawings stamped is starting it Monday or Tuesday. And it's very simple. It's a two-hour fit-up to add on to what's already completed.
And what we were looking for is the approval of a liquor license prior to that because there are so many things that come after that we need to do before opening. We obviously would not be ordering or serving any until we actually had the liquor license in hand.
So a m- mat- application approval, we have to be contingent on a certificate of occupancy and occupancy and that's something that we can do?
Correct. And so we did get an opinion from council on how we should move forward and the motion that is within your agenda does document that.
So I was supposed to, supposed to go into public hearing on this, so if you don't mind. Sorry for missing that, but I'll take a motion to go into public hearing.
One second.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Any other questions?
The hours, maybe I'm just reading in our packet?
Sure. Sunday through Saturday, every day, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Okay.
The last booking for golf would be at 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Kind of booking hour sessions?
Correct. Yep, hour increments. Yep.
And I saw seven, seven simulators, is that right?
Seven simulators, yes.
And 52 seats, 87 occupancy? Is that what I'm reading in here? Does that mean some people are sitting, some people are playing?
Correct. 54 seats actually in total.
Okay.
And that consists of the bar and then bar tabletops at each simulator and then just a few high tops. The occupancy was generated by the architectural company, so not by the town or the fire department.
And with regards to the bar, people would come in, just kind of come in for a drink, even if they're not renting?
They can, they can, but a typical golf simulator company is you do a booking, you come about 15, 20 minutes early, you might sit at the bar, you might get a beer before you go to your simulator. But yes, other people can come in and have a beverage.
Where in the building is, if I'm fairly familiar with the mill, mill's a bit of a maze, where in the building is the premises?
If you're looking at Stachis?
Yep.
And Good Day Cafe, we're right in between.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Those are all my questions.
Any other questions?
Do you have the, the equipment for checking licenses?
Yes.
Or will you be getting that?
Yes, it's actually in the cart waiting to be purchased. It's called the black box, so we bought the best one on the market. So this one scans for any potential fraudulent IDs, but we also are aware that if any outer staters come in, we can't solely rely on that. But the black box is like the king pumba of all the scanners, but we have that ready to go once we get a license.
This is in the weeds, but is there a minimum age? Like, can a, what age can kids come in unattended?
So we have, you have to be accompanied by an adult if you're 18 or younger, although we have in our disclaimer that the two of us can have some discretionary because we all know that maybe four 17-year-olds are more mature than four 21-year-olds.
Totally.
And if you were to look at our facility, it is clearly divided. We don't have doors, but if you look at it, a bird's eye view, the front four simulators are a little bit, it's like a softer environment, more for like someone like my father who would want to just enjoy golf. The back has a little bit more, that's where the bar is, and it's a little bit more lively. We have the ability to control where minors go, but a minor can come in as long as they're accompanied by an adult.
Can we just get an amendment on the, the application of the hours of operations? I think it is. No, I know right above it says 9:00 until 9:00 p.m. Or is that, am I misunderstanding?
I don't know. I just saw.
Is he right above that? Okay.
So it's just an inconsistency within?
No, right under there, it says nine, seven, it actually says 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
And those are our 7:00 a.m. to 11:00. Do you need me to make a change?
I think we can probably do it in a straight way. Just for the record, just to make sure it's accurate.
Sure.
And then we just want to see if there's any public comments as well.
Does anyone have any public comment? State your name and address, please.
Terry Holland, 133 Green Street. I think it's great that they're coming to town. I think it's just going to add a lot to the downtown and to that area and draw in more people, which is what we want to do. They're great people, they've already reached out to the high school, the youth center. They seem like they want to give to the town. I think it's a, it's, I'm excited about it and I'm happy to work with them on anything I can do.
Thank you. Anyone else? And with two items for public hearing, so do we close?
We'll be closed.
Looking for a motion to?
I'll move to close the public hearing for the application from Karen Jeffrey Bramwell of Fairways on High LLC for an alcoholic beverage, restaurant, liquor license and an entertainment license at 15 High Street.
Did you have something else you wanted to add?
No, I just didn't know where else. Nope. I can sit.
Any, all in favor on the motion to close public hearing?
Aye.
Motion closed. Any, does anyone want to make a, make a motion on the application?
I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Karen Jeffrey Bramwell of Fairways on High LLC for an alcoholic beverage, restaurant, liquor license, and an entertainment license at 15 High Street, provided that the license shall be held by the select board until such time as the applicant has legal access and occupancy for the licensed premises from the building and fire departments.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Welcome.
Congratulations, thank you. Okay, next item is, oh, next item is also subject to public hearing, so I'll take a motion to go back into public hearing.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Back into public hearing. Next item is application for the Wine Connection, Inc., located at 117 Main Street for a change of manager, officers, directors, LLC managers, issuance, transfer of stock, new stockholder, pledge of inventory, and pledge of collateral. Is anyone here to speak on that? Come to the podium, please. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Steve Kambati. My address is 59 Greenside Way, Methuen, Massachusetts.
I'm Krupal Soni. My address is 9 Nansted Drive, Norchunford, Mass.
Okay, thank you. Tell us about your application, please.
Yes, so essentially we'll be, we're planning on taking over the Wine Connection. We'll be purchasing the stock from the current ownership. Essentially, the operations will be pretty much the same, only changes that we may have is with hours of operations and if future permitting, we might, you know, try to bring in a tobacco license or something like that essentially, but other than that, we plan on keeping the Wine Connection the Wine Connection.
What's the, what's the plan on the potential change of hours?
So it'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
And what's it currently?
Currently, it is till 8:00 p.m.
Okay. Two extra hours.
Yeah.
Seven days a week?
Not seven days a week. I believe Sundays, due to state law, we have to close a little bit earlier, so we'll be closing at 8:00 p.m. on Sundays.
Anyone, have any questions?
You guys are license holders elsewhere?
Correct.
How many?
So I am a license holder in Woburn, Massachusetts, Burlington, Massachusetts, and Wareham, Massachusetts. Krupal is a license holder in Woburn, Massachusetts.
For how many years?
So I've been a license holder for a little bit over three years now, same as Krupal. Yeah, about three years.
Are these, are they similar type locations?
Yes, they're all very similar. A lot of them are under the brand name Liquor Market. We have Liquor Market of Wareham, Burlington, and Woburn. They're pretty similar throughout layout and product selection and all of that. And we try to focus on, you know, higher-end whiskeys, wines, and of course, you know, premium cigars and things like that.
Are you planning to change the name?
No, the name will stay Wine Connection.
Do you have, if someone comes in and they, they have an ID, whether it be in-state or out-of-state, do you carry the machine that would?
Yeah.
A lot of people don't realize that out-of-state licenses are not valid for you. It's more for you because if they?
I'm working, backup cast this year.
If you have, if you have, if you have some public comment, you can go to the?
So essentially what you were saying was that this past April, a law was passed that now we're protected against out-of-state IDs, but our protocol for checking IDs is of course, our point-of-sale system has a scanner inbuilt. Without scanning an ID, we're not able to proceed with the transaction, as well as that we're very well-versed in actually understanding whether we're looking at a fake or a real ID. We've been doing it for a numerous amount of years. We've, you know, also been in touch with the ABCC regarding how to identify fake IDs and real IDs and all of that stuff, and I think we do a pretty well, a pretty good job at all of our other locations.
That's good, that's good to hear, but this is a college town.
Of course.
So we're, we're expecting you to, to carry that burden, which is good and it's bad, but?
What I will add in is our ID guidelines for all of our stores is that under 25 years of age, we require a secondary ID for those that are out of state. Of course, there's six actual ID types that we can rely on in the state of Massachusetts, three of them being pass, United States passport, passport card, military ID, and their state ID, liquor ID, and a driver's license, but anything for out-of-state, we always ask for secondaries as well.
And then the wallet's empty.
Of course.
Sounds like you have a pretty good plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other further questions?
No, but just to add to that, we don't want you to, to get into trouble and we don't want the kids to get into trouble.
Of course.
So this is sort of your fair warning?
Yes.
That we do take this very, very, very seriously.
100%.
And you want us to because you'll be in big trouble too.
Yes, yes, of course.
Okay, good to hear.
Public comment?
Are you all set with what they explained?
Sure.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'll take a motion to, to close, to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any further, any discussion on the, oh, okay. I'll take a motion to, I'll take a motion on the, on the application.
I'll move the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from the Wine Connection Incorporated, located at 117 Main Street for a change of manager, officers, directors, LLC managers, issuance, transfer of stock, new stockholder, pledge of inventory, and pledge of collateral.
Any further discussion, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, Stephen.
I'll take a motion to close licensing.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Back to you, Ms. Chair.
Okay, so our first item of new business is to review the sponsorship policy, so I think I'm going to pass that right over to Town Manager, Robby, guess.
Sure, absolutely. So we've had some requests from different committees, for instance, the festival committee to do sponsors for events and the youth center, and additionally, we've seen kind of coming up at some of the different fields and parks, banners on sponsoring basically, you know, at McAvoy or at Carl Thomas, and so we wanted to make sure that we're, if we are doing these sponsorships, that we're doing them correctly and that we're following the law. So we've put together this policy that basically outlines how you would go about getting a sponsorship if you were a committee or an employee who wanted to do that. It also talks about the fact that these are not naming rights, and so we want to make sure that we're avoiding people trying to purchase naming rights for buildings or anything else. This would be merely sponsorship or an advertisement at some of the different venues. What's important to remember is that these types of sponsorships or advertisements have value, and so the Massachusetts General Authority B applies to them. We want to make sure that people are aware of that. Additionally, if a town employee is soliciting a sponsor, we do have ethics paperwork that we need to fill out, so we just want to make sure that it's all being done correctly. And so we put together this policy for your review. We're not asking you to vote on it tonight, just so you, we can have a place to point people when they call and say, "We'd love to get a sponsor for this." And it basically lays out the different type of sponsorships, the different levels of the amounts, what would have to be accepted by the select board, which basically is everything, and we like to keep it that way. And it kind of puts forward a process for people asking for sponsorships moving forward.
We will be voting on this in the future, you think?
Yeah.
Great.
Did you say there were sponsorship levels?
No, I said that, so some communities have it leveled so that if it's less than $5,000, it doesn't need to go for the select board, and other, in over $5,000, it does. We're leaving it at any sponsorship needs to go for the select board. I think that there's more danger in fraud when the smaller things than there is sometimes in the bigger things. Just want to make sure that we're covered on all of that as well.
What about the current sponsorship?
Right, so we, our thought process is that we would have this kickoff in speaking with, with Rick and others either January 1st or at the beginning of the, end of the next spring season. So we're gonna, now that we've shared this with you, we're going to share this with some of them as well to find out what type of commitments they've already made, so that we don't interfere with anything that they've already collected.
So we don't know how long those are for.
But the town itself, right now, we don't think has any?
No, we know we don't.
I saw this would not impact any school property.
It would not impact any school property. They have their own sponsorship policy already.
They do.
They do.
It seemed very straightforward to me.
Yeah, it's just to review and make sure we don't have any questions at our next meeting and we may get public feedback, we may not. Who knows? Well, if we have an official policy and an official pathway, we may actually get more interest.
Absolutely. I think that is often, especially for the festival committee, right? So it's been a little bit of a struggle.
And this is very specific on naming, on not providing naming rights, meaning that naming rights are not allowed at all? Because that falls under our?
We have a separate policy, yeah.
For naming, but doesn't?
For naming.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have our policy for?
That's part of our select board policy.
No, I know that, but does that, does that allow for us to sell naming rights?
Our naming policy could technically, we could technically sell naming rights, so if we wanted to do like, I don't know, we want to put out, we had to put out to bid, and we could do, I don't know, we wanted to have like the?
There's, I'm not thinking of anything in particular right now.
Our naming, we can, under our naming rights policy.
We can.
But again, that falls under the select board, and we'll remember quickly, it requires that 30-day public input and a public hearing.
It's like a process.
Do we, is it too far to, like, do we have any concerns about what would actually be put up?
So?
I know that we don't have any control right now, like, I know that there's nothing right now, but like?
We do, and so I, I did try to address that a little bit in the policy by talking about how it's not a public forum and that we have the authority, because it's our property, to determine what would be going up on signs. That's always a danger though, right? And so we want to continue to reiterate that it's not a public forum, and so there wouldn't be an application process in front of you or anything like that to apply. You just would do the final approvals.
Has this public forum language been tested elsewhere?
So this, this, there's two policies in existence right now. One is in Easton and one is in Hanover. Theirs gets a lot more into the weeds, and I'm happy to send them to you, about all the different things that they will and will not allow. Very much content-based determinations, and so our argument is more that we're going to say, we would say like, we would allow a sponsorship but not an advertisement. So that's kind of how we're looking at it.
But we're allowed to control the content of?
Because we're saying it's not a public forum.
Because it's not a public forum.
Yeah.
That's what, I guess that's my point.
Yes, because we're saying it's not a public forum.
We're allowed to say that this is similar to our flag policy.
Similar to our flag policy, yes.
We all know why we're asking.
Yes, I agree, 100%. And this is a conversation that Laurie and I have had, where we don't want to have the, but beer name, McAvoy Field, right? So we got to make sure that we're careful about what happens.
Right, okay. We have the right to refuse, yes.
And what about size and shape and?
So we, yeah, so we, right now, these all fall into temporary signs. We, we could just make a determination that we wanted to put size and shape restrictions in, and we certainly can.
It's going to be a different place, right?
Oh, I was just, like, yeah. I mean, I think in certain fields, it's all the same, corrugated, right? But then there's companies that have not flags, but like banners kind of things, yeah.
It's difficult because we have a lot of rules for the signs, signs that our businesses can have, and so we want to make sure that we're not doing things that businesses aren't able to do, or having type, the type of coverage that you, police or others can't see into the fields, so.
So we'll follow the guidelines for temporary signs and then?
Right, there's certain signs we don't allow, right? So we want to, these are conversations that we want to have with some of the users that have already been putting signs up. It's a good, we're, we're sipping our, taking our tone right now and seeing how we, we do.
I think, I'm grateful you guys, you know, have done the work on this to put it together. I think it's the way of the world right now. We need to be able to participate. So we'll get there, and I think it's a great idea.
I will send the board the Hanover and Easton policies, so you can review them and see if you think that there's anything that we should add.
Thank you. These are literally the only two towns that?
You're the only two I can find, yeah.
But many towns have sponsorships, yes, but don't policy.
But maybe not a policy, which seems like a terrible idea. Yep. Any other questions or we can move it on? Okay. So our next item of new business is to reaffirm the select board policies. As a practice, we should reaffirm our policies every year. We spent a lot of time, was it two, two years ago now, going over and revisiting and rewriting, so.
So there's no changes to any of these. These are the policies that you approved two years ago. I, I find it helpful to reaffirm them because it just kind of reminds people of what our duties are. You know, we've got important things in here, like the code of conduct for other boards and committees that are important to us be able to point to.
Any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Select board reaffirming select board policies as presented.
I have a motion and a second or two. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item C, we are going to review our bus shelter locations, and I see that there are people here to talk about that with us, so come on up and just introduce yourselves.
I did not realize we were going to have this dramatic entrance.
It's always dramatic in North Andover.
And we can see it down here.
So for the record, Andrew Shapiro, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Community and Economic Development. I'm joined here by Noah Berger, the Administrator for the Merrimack Valley Transit Authority, otherwise known as MEVA, and we're going to talk to you all about bus shelters. And I'm just going to get right into it. Noah's going to begin us with some background on why we're here and dive into the first couple of slides.
Yeah, just by, by way of background, for about 50 years, we have been a flag stop system, which means you have to wave at a bus to get it to stop, and it will only stop at safe areas. While that sounds like a very accommodating and, and, and a helpful thing for riders, it actually turns out to be very intimidating for people who are less familiar with our system, and it's, it's also the joke amongst our drivers is it becomes the 50-foot express because I might be waiting here, Andrew might be waiting there, and, and so that it slows the system down. So we, we are, have a plan to add stops. Parallel to that, we were able to receive some funding to put bus shelters. Obviously, we wouldn't have a shelter at every stop, but we, we did get some funding primarily through the, the state's Shared Streets and Spaces program. So we did get an initial round of funding a couple of years ago that allowed us to put shelters up, 15 in Lawrence, four in Amesbury. In the second round, again, we, we opened it up to all of our 16 communities to join in, and North Andover came in for two, and we were, we did prevail in that, that program as well, so we have two there. And then the, our legislative delegation was? And then the, our legislative delegation was able to secure a, an additional earmark for, for two, two more shelters. So, that, that means that, that North Andover will be the lucky recipient of four shelters. And, and I think this is, you know, let me go to the next slide. This is in a period of, of growth for us. You know, we are now system-wide over 50% above our pre-pandemic numbers. And for those of you who are, you know, familiar with the transit industry, that's pretty unheard of. I think it's, most transit authorities saying, "If only I can get to my pre-pandemic levels, I'll, I'll be good." We're, we're, we're blowing the doors off of that. And particularly in North Andover, where we're actually over 120% above our, our pre-pandemic levels. So, you guys are doing a great job riding the bus and taking advantage of, of the great service that, that we have. I think some of that is, is due to some expansion. Some of it is due to the fact that we've been, thank to the leadership of our, our board, and I say that a little bit pandering because my boss is sitting right next to me, but...
He didn't hear.
Yeah. But, you know, they, they voted to, to go fare-free first as a pilot in, in, in 2022, and then to go permanently this, this past winter when, when, after the data came in showing that a successful program, not only from a transportation perspective, but from a community, from an economic development, from a public health standpoint, and, and then the numbers show it. So, I think what, what we'd like to talk to you, talk with you today is just opportunities for where we could locate these four shelters. The first two will come in fairly soon, and then the next two will, will come in, you know, sometime after that.
Do you want to speak to a little bit about the, what they look like?
Shelter, shelter design, and if you've seen them, there's, there's some other, are up in, like I said, there are 15 now up in Lawrence and another four up in Amesbury. They're not, say, not your grandfather's bus shelter in that, you know, it doesn't have the Plexiglas, which just doesn't age well, gets scratched up there. It's perforated metal, so you can see through it, and it's easier to maintain. And it's also, it's only two feet wide, so it fits on our narrower sidewalks without, without blocking them. And then there's an overhang is, is, is a little bit larger. It also, they all include a bench, and they have a, a solar panel at the top which allows for lighting.
One more question on that.
Yeah, yeah.
That perforate, so wind and elements can get through?
Wind, wind does, so, right, so it's, it's, it's a trade-off, and it's, it's not as, it's not as warm as, as a shelter would be if it was surrounded on, on all sides. It is, it is somewhat, you're somewhat blocked from the wind, but it's, 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 you know, certainly wind gets through and, and some, you know, precipitation can get through too, and, and days like the, like today, earlier today.
For sure.
Yesterday, for sure, yeah. And I, I just have, you know, as we go through the routes, there just, if you're not completely intimate with our system, there are sort of five routes that, that go through North Andover. The, the number three goes through the heart of North Andover, right, right, right in front of the town hall here, as well as to, to Woodridge and, and terminating at the North Andover Mall. The, the number eight goes primarily through South Lawrence, Parker Street, but also terminates at the North Andover Mall, which is sort of a mini hub for us. And then the nine goes all the way to Merrimack College. The, the 14 was extended last, last September. It used to just go between Haverhill and Osgood Landing, and then we, we extended that all the way to Lawrence, so it's another connection between Haverhill and Lawrence, but the, the bulk of the service is in North Andover and obviously serves the, the new Amazon facility, as well as some of the, the businesses on 125. And then we have the, the Andover, North Andover cross down, the 21, which is a, a much more low-profile route that, that's primarily, most but not all the riders are, are senior citizens, and it, it provides more local service and also terminates at the North Andover Mall.
Thanks, Noah. And now, we'll jump into some of the potential locations that we wanted to consider for these new bus shelters. And really, we're talking about these initial two shelters. I'm not sure, Noah, what the schedule is for the Shared Streets and Spaces grant. Is that, when, when do we expect that funding to be coming through?
I mean, we should, we, we were granted the award, so we, we should be able to execute soon, as we're dealing with the state.
Yep.
But, and then there's, there's, the lead time is, it's getting longer than, than it's been in the past for ordering the shelters, but, you know, I would hope to have them up within a year.
Okay. So, I only ask that because we already have the earmarked funding from the state that we'd received earlier. That's in hand, and we're, you know, we've already put in an order for two shelters. So, those are basically essentially on their way. So, we're hoping we can have those installed a little later this year, maybe by early fall. So, the first location we wanted to talk about was just Sutton High Chadwick. For those of you who don't know, this intersection has been recently redesigned, rebuilt, under our new complete streets policy. And as part of the redesign, we actually laid down a pre-done concrete pad. So, you know, there's really no other reason that we wanted to put a shelter here other than, hey, we don't have to do any more work here. All we got to do is screw the thing in. Maybe a little easier said than done, but it's ready to go. This is a very visible location. As Noah mentioned before, the Route 114, excuse me, the Route 14 passes through here. This is the route that comes to and from the Amazon Ward Hill area, going to the, the station in Lawrence, McGovern Station. It's walking distance from a lot of housing that's been recently built in the Mill area and the Davidson, Ferber Mills. It's ADA accessible, so it kind of meets a lot of the criteria that we'd be looking at, so we wanted that to be under consideration. Another one we're looking at that I think is going to be a popular location to consider would be North Andover Middle School. It's on the Route 3 also, which comes from McGovern Station and downtown, serves the YMCA Woodridge Homes. And something else that's kind of interesting is that starting in September, working with MEVA, we're able to set up two trips per school day to the youth center. So, again, kind of synergizing with MEVA to ensure that we're maximizing what they bring to the table as a resource to help kids get to the youth center for after-school activities, which I think is great. So, having a bus shelter there adds a little bit of flavor to the school site. It lets kids know, here's, here's where you pick up the bus, and it makes it a little safer and more identifiable instead of kids all over the place waiting for wherever they are. So, we wanted to look at that. Peter Street over by Rocky's Ace Hardware, it's just, we happen to know anecdotally and just visually that it is a popular location where people get on and get off the bus. This is very close to the Woodridge Homes. This is also on the way back to the Lawrence MBTA Station, located on the Route 3 for MEVA. As you can see, there's sort of a makeshift bus stop on one side of the street that was, I'm not sure who put that up. It's on the church property. There's a church there, and I did reach out to them just to inquire if they would be interested in an upgrade. If, maybe they wouldn't consider it an upgrade to, for the new one, I don't know, but that's, I haven't, I've yet to hear back from them. So, we'd have to kind of do some investigation, probably along with DPW, to see what made sense as far as a good location that would be safe for people to access. But this is just another location we want to throw out there for everyone's consideration. We also wanted to look at Stevens Memorial Library, also again on Route 3, which is very popular. And again, covering youth center trips here in the area of not only the library, but the, the downtown and Wood, and on the way to Woodridge Homes and the middle school. So, it could be an advantageous site to look at as well. And that's all we had. I think, you know, our thought was, you know, put these out there, get some reaction, maybe even potentially have you all, if you were so inclined, vote on approving all of these on the, under the auspices of, we will do our best, you know, in the field to assess, you know, safety and logistics, because that'll also come into play when we get into this. And if for some reason one doesn't work, we can report back and let everybody know. And then, of course, we're going to have two more bus shelters that we're going to be looking to install within the next year or so, due to additional funding coming down the line, and there may be other opportunities. So, we just want to kind of put these out there and get, get some thoughts, feedback, ideas, and, and hopefully some approval as well.
I want to, Ace?
Yeah.
I assume you'll wait until the Mass DOT, because that's all going to get...
Yeah, I have to take a closer look at that project. I'm not sure to what extent the project encroaches down Peter Street.
Well, that pole...
Is that pole moving? Is that one of those? Oh, it's in question, okay, yeah.
Yeah. It'll really not.
Okay, so that's a good point. So, you know, that, that point alone right there, I mean, it's again, one of the reasons why, you know, we may want to hold off on Peter Street.
I think it's a great location.
Yeah.
I just, I think we need to wait until we, or have an understanding from them.
Right, what it's going to look like after.
Sure.
Like, that's all going to get touched.
Yeah, that's a valid point. And I mean, you're bringing up another good point, which is, you might be thinking to yourself, why, why weren't any downtown locations identified? Well, I was thinking about, okay, you know, I look out my window every day, I see people get on and off the bus right outside town hall. You know, A, I just want to, you know, make sure that people be okay putting something in front of town hall. Like, some people might say, oh, you know, we don't need a bus shelter there. But two, you know, we're going to be looking at streetscape improvements in the next few years. So, now, granted, that's, that's a little ways down the line. We're, we're still in a very early design phase process with that, but we also want to think critically about what improvements we make to the downtown that wouldn't have to be ripped out of place shortly thereafter if we were to be able to move forward on improvements, so...
I think they're thoughtful locations, so...
They used to be stops in front of Heritage Green, maybe Village Green, but I know Heritage Green did have them. I don't know if they still do.
Well...
I don't know if Noah can comment on if there had been stops there at one point?
It's a big, it's a pretty sizable complex.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we stopped there. It's, it, and, and a flag stop system means that basically, you know, if you have a critical mass of people, or it doesn't even have to be a critical mass, it can be one person, but you wave the bus down, but I think it's true that people tend to congregate as if it were a, a bus stop system, and I think our, our drivers are good at training people where to stand. So, you know, it may seem like there is a, a legitimate bus stop, so why not put a sign that tells people where, where the bus is going and, and what number it is? So, that, that's, that's definitely true. We look, I think you're right, that is a, a high-volume stop.
Well, it is every time I drive by.
I mean, if you're asking us to, you know, have that on a list of approved areas in front of Heritage Green, I don't have a photo of, of it up here. We'd have to, I'm happy to put that to the, you know, toward the top of the list if that's what folks want us to do. I think there's probably, truth be told, there's probably a lot of worthy locations. This is going to be kind of a piecemeal process as funding comes down the, you know, the line to procure more and more of these stops. And we just want to make sure we're, we're being thoughtful in terms of putting them in places where they're going, they'll get used adequately and not, you know, also trying not to clutter, visually clutter the area. We, we want to put them in strategic locations where they're going to get used and that people aren't going to be like, oh, there's a bus stop on every, there's a bus shelter on every corner, you know?
If, this is a little bit crazy, but if it turns out we made a wrong choice and it doesn't work out there, are they easy to move to a new location? I mean, maybe not easy, but is it possible to move them to another location?
Well, like, the High Street, the High Street one years ago would go into Boston, and that's not working, that's not doing it anymore.
No.
And, yeah, so, Noah, I, my point is, I think if it's not the most ideal location...
I don't, I think these are great locations, but...
I mean, the, the short answer is that they can be moved, but my facilities manager would probably strangle me.
That's fair.
Well, you know, the, the only other thing, the only other thing that we have to take into consideration is that they do, we do need to lay down a concrete pad. So, as long as people are okay with the idea of leaving the vestige of a concrete pad in a location where we might remove it, then, you know, and obviously, it's going to cost money to put down the concrete pad, so it's sort of a, it's a...
Is that part of this, that's included?
No.
I mean, I want to reiterate also, like, this funding is not coming from town funding. It is outside.
So, let me, I'll, I'll just clarify something on town, on, on funding. So, the, the first two bus shelters completely covered by the earmark, and actually, the, they're actually a little more expensive than what the earmark would cover, so I want to, now I'm pandering to Noah and saying that I want to thank him because they stepped up and they're covering the added cost there. However, we are going to have to work something out on probably facilitating the laying of the concrete pads and working with DPW under the, their contracts with, you know, under their, their long-term contracts with contractors that can lay a concrete pad.
Makes sense to use the one that exists already, I think.
Well, yeah, that was the one, I, I thought that was, that was the easiest one in that, in that sense, for sure, yeah, yeah.
Do you think that the, I mean, because we don't have, we're not have a ton, right? Like, to have one at Stevens and at the middle school? You know what I mean? Like, wouldn't you spread them out a little bit? Just get started, or, you know what I'm saying? Like...
You wouldn't start with two, two?
Or starting with two, right?
And then you spread them out a little bit.
Spread them out a little bit.
And by the way, I can come back, like, I can say, hey, we're, we're getting another two, you want to revisit this topic? We can do that, yeah.
I'm assuming once we have four, we might decide there are great places for a few more, and we'll just take it a little bit at a time.
My question is, what data, is, is there data driving, specifically to survey riders? Do you know where your lightings are? Is that part of the draw of these locations?
I did ask if they could pull up, like, top five, top 10 stops. Apparently, that's, that's difficult data to collect. I don't know if no one wants to comment on that specifically, but we're going off of more or less anecdotal data based on where we understand riders tend to...
From the drive.
Right, yeah, and it's, it's not completely anecdotal, but it's, the challenge that we have right now is because we have a flag stop system, the way the, we have what's called automatic passenger counters that, that measure where people get on and off, but it's not as precise as it would be if we had set bus stops. So, once we implement this, then when I come back to you in, in a couple of years, I will have exact data at every stop. Right now, I have very good route level data and segment level data, but the specific stop level data is, is limited.
Would it make sense to try and survey riders? So, where, where would you like them on your route? Again, the goal, we're going to put them up, you want them used, right?
Right, and, and I think right now, we have, we have a contract with a, a consulting firm that's, that's looking at all, all stops, not just the shelters, and what they, they're, they're going to identify three different levels of, of stops. So, the highest, the, the highest level would be a shelter. There may be, the, the lowest level would just be a pole with a sign on it, and between that, you know, you could have a bench but no shelter, things like that. And they're looking at, at both from a safety perspective, from a convenience for, for riders' perspective, what makes the most sense, where to, where to position shelters. Some of it, you want to encourage, you know, we have situations in particularly high-volume corridors where people are just lining up anywhere on the street, and you want to say, okay, wouldn't it make sense if we all kind of congregated in one, one set location? And some of that, you wouldn't see, you know, you see for a segment where the, where the ridership is, and you can say, okay, now we have a, we have a plan to...
Can you figure out what makes sense in that?
Yes, exactly.
But Noah brings up a good point that we're gonna, so we're going to see more than just shelters in the future. There's going to be a point in time where we're going to see poles with just a sign to indicate, okay, this is a, this is a gathering area, it may not have a shelter itself, but it's like, this is where we think is, people should be gathering, and where bus, bus drivers should expect to see people.
And listen, it's when we, we want to get them, we have the funding, we want to get them out there, you want to try and be as effective as possible with it, I guess, right? Make sure they're used. You said there's 15 in Lawrence currently open? You said there's 15 in Lawrence currently open? Can anybody take a look at one? I'm guessing the colors aren't negotiable?
The colors, you don't like the colors?
I didn't say that, I just asked the question, because others may ask the question, I was just more curious. Amoeba colors, I assumed, yeah.
Right, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the goal. The, and this was an effort that we went through, you know, and you, you remember the old buses, and, you know, we still have a few running that, you know, have the same exact color scheme as mail trucks. And, you know, I, I have deep respect for the, the US Postal Service, but that wasn't the look we were going for.
Yep.
And, you know, we, I think we lacked visibility. And so this, when we, when we rebranded, and that was a community effort, they, you know, that, you know, people thought we were running more service as soon as we put the new buses out, just because the buses were visible, and obviously the shelters are the same. So, you know, that's, that's, that's the preferred, and I think they do look nice. You know, I mean, if there's something, if you, if you want, like, maroon and purple instead, or something like that, you know, let me, let me know, and.
I'm not a design expert, I know it's a question that'll get asked, I would be doing a job if I didn't ask it, so I just wanted to.
I think the goal is, and, and also have people know that, oh, that's amoeba shelter.
Absolutely.
And they associate with amoeba.
Not have the situation we have with the, kind of lean to on Peter Street where, you know, nobody knows what it is.
Is that a?
Can I buy my eggs there?
The trailhead.
The one in Lawrence is orange all the way down, right? The metal's orange as well?
Yes, and I think these are, well, it has the yellow, I think the reason, from this particular, particular picture, it's emphasizing the see-through nature of the, the backing. Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's what it looks like. So it's, it's actually the same specs, it's just the, the orange, and we call it coral. But that's, 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 that's the most distinctive. And then the bench is, is the aqua.
Minor, minor detail, but one of the shelters we ordered is a 10-foot shelter, 10-foot wide, it's a little bigger. Their standard is eight feet, and so we have an eight-foot and a 10-foot coming. The Sutton.
Actually, the, the, most of the ones in Lawrence are actually 12 feet.
Oh, 12 feet, or they're larger.
The eight feet, the only eight-foot shelter we have right now is on 110 in Amesbury.
Okay.
But we did order it, and, we did order 18 and 110 for, for the, the first two.
Any other questions?
Years ago, they, they used to have a, a bus that would pick people up here in North Andover, but take them to the beach.
Oh, I remember that.
We have a beach bus, but not, not north there.
Well, now.
But we do have our own little beach.
We do, we do, the, the number 17 bus runs seven days a week now, and every hour will take you to the beach.
Oh, there you go.
So it's not like, not like.
Good thinking.
Right, so.
Which beach is this?
Salisbury Beach.
We gotta keep it within the state.
Salisbury Beach or Salisbury Beach Conservation?
Salisbury Beach, so, yeah.
Like, it turns around in the.
We'll save that for next.
It's like, it's made for that bus. We'll take a field trip next summer, okay? I think that would make a lot of people happy. All right, other questions? Okay.
You've been busy.
I'll take a motion. I think, is everybody comfortable approving the four locations with the parameters that if they have to shift them slightly to make sure it's the right spot, we're open to that? So, okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll move this to the left board for the locations of the bus shelters as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so the four are High, Middle School, Library, and somewhere on Peter Street, as presented.
There's not too many choices on Peters, so it'll be, one will be picked, and that will be that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you very much.
A lot of, a lot of good work.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I appreciate it.
All right, item D is the floodplain management study, so. Something we've been waiting for and excited to hear about.
We got a little sample last night.
We did. Our next presentation.
Did we actually get any? Did we get any flooding in town?
No, we actually did very well.
It was all water, it was all water, yeah. Did you see the Andover cars flooded, like, no?
Oh, it was Lawrence, and it was like, the car was full, yeah.
While they're getting set up, I'll just quickly introduce this, this project. So we have our consultants from Apex, and I'll let them introduce themselves. They worked on this study that we started last year, actually in cooperation with DPW, so thanks, Jim and John for being here as well, and Amy Maxner from the Conservation Department also participated as well, and they're here to present the findings, so I will let them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. So my name's Maria George, I'm here with Ryan Paul. We're from Apex Companies, and as Andrew introduced, we're gonna be giving a brief overview of the Riverine Floodplain Management Study for Kachikowick Brook.
As brief as we can make it, packing all this information.
While still giving valuable information. So, just to orient ourselves, Kachikowick Brook runs from Lake Kachikowick and goes northwest towards the Merrimack River. Pre-1800s, it was an open, flowing brook, and in the, in the mid-1800s, a series of dams were built for the textile mill industry. A total of five dams have been built along the brook. This has resulted in a series of ponds that are now along the length of the brook. And in addition, a lot of development has occurred throughout the length of the brook with, with residential and commercial development, roadways and, and culverts. It's been very built up. So as everyone remembers, in August of 2023, we had a severe flooding event in the Machine Shop District, as well as throughout the rest of North Andover, but the most severe flooding was experienced here. The, there was, in August 8th, there was 6.2 inches of rain that occurred in a six-hour period, which is a massive, massive amount of rain. And as a result of this, the town asked Apex to come in and, and study the system and try to give recommendations for how to handle floodwater going forward. So, there, like I mentioned, it's very built up. There's a lot of pieces of built infrastructure in this stream. There's about 18 culverts, or small bridges, you can think of them, and then, as I mentioned, five dams. So we went to all of the structures throughout the system, took measurements on elevations, and confirmed what was built. Felt a little bit like archaeology in some places. And were able to take all that information and put it together into one comprehensive model of this river system. So we also went and installed some data loggers in strategic areas throughout the brook in order to measure water levels. And we had them out for a few months, and we use this information to improve our model, to give us information on what the base flow is, and also use it to calibrate a storm event that happened in December during our, our monitoring period. So what we looked at was, we looked at a few different size storms. We looked at storms that are happening today, what we call present-day storms, and then projected storms. So the present-day storms are based on historic data from NOAA Atlas 14. And the, for example, the 100-year 24-hour storm would have 7.93 inches. There's another tool that allows us to estimate the projected rainfall totals in 2070, and so for the same 100-year storm event in 2070, that would have 10.8 inches. So these are the four storms that we looked at, eight, eight storms that we looked at. So we developed two models. One was a rainfall runoff model. This looked at the total area that contributes flow to both Lake Kachikowick and Kachikowick Brook. We used the runoff flows that were generated from this model and used that as flow inputs into this other program called HECRAAS. It's the program that is used by FEMA to develop their floodplain maps. So in the HECRAAS model, we have all of the infrastructure modeled, all of the culverts and dams and, and the river itself. So there's a lot of different results to talk about, but just to kind of bring it down, we looked at where flooding was occurring and during what size storm. So in, with the present-day storms, we were seeing flooding starting in the 50-year period, the 50-year storm, with flooding occurring in the Machine Shop District. Whereas in your 2070 storms, flooding starts at a more frequent storm size of a 10-year storm event. I'm gonna go through a few figures where the top half is a top-down view of the flooding extents in the present-day 100-year storm event. So on the, on the left of this figure, well, I guess, on the, on the left of this figure, we have the Merrimack River. And then we have, in the middle is Sutton Pond, and then on the right, we have Osgood Pond. So I have called, called out a few locations where, where flooding was notable and, and at what size storm it occurred. So on the right, over near Osgood Pond, the parking lot near Osgood, in our models, showed flooding in the present 100-year storm. So this is moving further upstream, so now we're looking at the Machine Shop District, Machine Shop Pond, and then on the right, we have Chickering Road. So as I mentioned, Machine Shop Village showed flooding in the 50-year storm event. Further upstream, a few apartment buildings around Water Street and Chickering Road were experiencing flooding in our model for the 2070 10-year storm. And then continuing further upstream, so we have Chickering Road on our, our left. In the middle, we have Osgood Street, and then on the right, we have Stevens Street. And so Stevens Street experienced flooding in the, the 2070 100-year storm from our model. So, so a lot of information to take in. But I'm going to, so that's an overview of what the current system has in terms of flooding. But the good news is that, one of the benefits of having all these dams is that there are ways, you can use the dams to, to your advantage. You can open or close the dams at strategic times in order to release flow or hold back flow. So colored in red and orange are, are the dams again throughout the system, this is a elevation view. So we have Sutton Pond down towards your left, then in the middle, Machine Shop Pond, and then further on your right, we have the Mill Pond Condominium Dam. So we looked at operating these three dams, again Sutton Pond, Machine Shop Pond, and Mill Pond Condominium. We looked at the, what we could do with opening order and the timing of, of, of opening and closing these dams, and how much to open them. And so working from downstream to upstream, we want, yeah, sorry, we work from downstream to upstream. We did not change the water levels in Lake Kachikowick Dam. That's holding back the water supply that's usually left closed, so that wasn't included in the alternatives. And also, Osgood Pond Dam, we also left that fully open. So that's the dam, Osgood Pond is on the downstream side of the Machine Shop Village. And so we wanted to leave that fully open. So we looked at three different alternatives for how to operate these dams. We looked at opening all three of the dams listed above. We also looked at that same condition, opening all three, and then closing Mill Pond Condominium before the start of the storm. And then for a third option, we looked at leaving Sutton Pond alone and opening up Machine Shop Pond and Mill Pond Condominium Pond, and then again, closing Mill Pond Condominium before the start of the storm. So this is a similar figure of flooding extents, but this is for the present-day 50-year storm. In gray, we have existing conditions. So in the Machine Shop District, we have flooding in our existing conditions for our, our present-day storm. But with all of the alternatives, where we're opening up the dams, allowing water to drain out before the storm, that is able to provide enough storage capacity to hold back water. And so then you have in your present-day 50-year flood, 50-year event, you're not experiencing flooding when you're doing this proactive dam, dam management. One other thing to point out on the right is just the difference between how much water is held back, between whether or not you choose to hold back flow at the Mill Pond Condominium. So the green is where you just open the dams and don't hold, don't add anything back in before the storm. And then the blue and pink, which are overlapping, is when you remove, when you add the boards back in at Mill Pond Condominium. So that helps to hold back flow from going downstream. So just to reiterate, the summary of what we found from the, from these dam operations is that opening up the dams ahead of the storm gives you storage capacity in your ponds to be able to receive your storm flows. And adding a couple of boards back in to the Mill Pond Condominium Dam will allow you to hold back flow in that system, the Mill Pond Stevens Pond area. And that protects the downstream areas, which includes the Mill, sorry, Machine Shop Pond area. And then the last, last thing is for Sutton Pond Dam, due to the elevation difference, opening up Sutton Pond Dam only benefits the immediate areas. Osgood Pond and the rest of the upstream system are not at all affected by the operations at Sutton Pond Dam. So that's what we have for dam operations, and now I'm gonna hand it over to Ryan to talk about future improvements.
Yeah, so if that wasn't enough for you all to digest, we're gonna throw some more at you, but this is maybe a little bit more tangible. While the dam operations was about half our study, the other half of our recommendations, you know, that we, what we can do today, that's the dam operations. You can try and hold back flow, things like this, and the second half is either looking for ways to add more floodplain to your system, things like that. So that's what this first one is on the Walker Road. This is right next to the McDonald's that's on Chickering. There's a little slice of land over here that we think could be beneficial as a project to lower this land. Right now, it's just kind of a steep slope shown in green. And if we lower that, put a wall in, try to add more storage capacity in terms of floodplain over there, that could help out, because that's right upstream of the Machine Shop Village area, so the more flood area we can add that's in that area, the better when you have a storm. So this we've tagged as a high priority. Second is watershed improvements overall, which is really, you know, a, a target of a lot of communities where, where focused on runoff coming into the, into the brook. So, you know, what can we do prior to the water getting to the brook? Infiltration, bioretention areas, rain gardens, things like this. Open spaces or parking lots that we can use for infiltration. Anything that we can stop the water, the storm water from getting directly into the brook and causing those peak high flows, the better. So in this case, our number one priority in terms of looking at these subcatchment areas is the Machine Shop area and working your way out from there. This is just a couple photos of some projects we've done with some impervious pavers and underground detention and, you know, storm water, bioretention areas, things like that. So we can do, we can add to our model and look for these areas and input these into a model and see how it affects the entire brook. So that could be a nice project to add on to this as a recommendation. Next, we put this as a moderate priority because costs start to go up when you start to think about flood barriers, but around the Machine Shop Pond, there might be some benefit from putting in some berm and possibly extending the wall that goes around these buildings around Machine Shop to just create more storage areas. So it's kind of the opposite of the floodplain, where you drop in the land, this one, you're raising it up to protect it. So just a natural structural flood barrier, half earthen berm, half, half a concrete berm where the building is. And this would need to be studied as well to see what exactly that would look like, and come up with costs, and then bring this, if we. and come up with costs and then bring this, if we wanted to bring this out to more of a, a final design. So those were the top priorities we had for hard construction. And the last piece of this was just going through, we, this was an MVP grant this was done under, so that was great, and I think we could go after more of these grants, which would be great to continue this. So just some funding for these future-type projects that I was just talking about. We have SRF funding, the MVP program, dam and seawall repair and removal, Masworks infrastructure grants. If the federal funding comes back, we'll see how that goes, but hazard mitigation grants, things like that. We should always be on the lookout for those, but I think you have a nice base to, you know, target some of these things when these grants come up. Okay, what can we look at? What's a high priority here? Do we wanna, do we wanna target one specific thing and try and check that off the list and try to improve the area? And last but not least, this is just a summary of our public outreach that we've done. We started this in September, ending it, this is our last public meeting and spiel to the public for, so to speak. We had kickoff meetings in September, October with stakeholders. We worked with Groundwork Lawrence to reach out to EJ communities in the area to get them informed. We worked closely with MVP coordinators, and we held a, a public presentation in May. So this is, like I said, this is the last one we did, we're doing here, and then hopefully we can add on to this and keep improving the area. And just a thank you to everybody that was involved. Opening up to any questions that you might have.
The one question that I have, and I'm sure that some of our DPW people would maybe be able to comment on this, is that we did get, we were draining the, the hatch, and you're not supposed to do that. The state said something about that, that you cannot be pouring that into the Merrimack River. Is that been a consideration, or has that problem been fixed?
You have any knowledge of the?
Unfortunately, Jim Stanford, Public Works Director. I'm not certain of that specific. I mean, anytime we open the hatch, the water is gonna make its way down to the Merrimack River. We are permitted. I think what you may be referring to, if I could guess, is during that large flooding event in 2023, we wouldn't open the hatch. So we have quite a bit of storage. In fact, when you think of how bad the flooding was, we still had over a foot over that large lake area for storage. So, no, we don't have any requirements where we can't open the hatch. In fact, I don't think we've opened it. We haven't opened it in a couple of years now, so.
Well, that's probably what I was remembering back to.
Yeah, there's no restriction that we can't, that I'm aware of. During the flooding event, when the, the DM Bureau and everybody came to town while the rain was ongoing, they, that was their first concern, you're not opening the hatch, which we weren't.
Which, what did you say?
We were, no, we weren't. We kept the hatch closed during that flooding event.
So what coverage?
You know, there have been times where we've reduced it. If it's gotten too high, if it got up 114, something around there, elevation, which I should mention, we're actually doing another study after this. Apex is helping us out with just looking at the lake elevation, because I know that's been a concern, but really, for the most part, we're very fortunate to have the flood storage, at least on the lakeside. We do have, as I mentioned, we do have some control over the boards by the condos. We've noticed over time, sometimes if you drive by the pond, Stevie's Pond, and it's low, water could have leaked through the boards. So we are looking at possibly, potentially making, maybe not a hatch to that degree, but more of something a little more automated than just tapping in boards and pulling them out.
Yeah, that's, yeah, probably could do better than that. All right, thank you.
Let me jump back to this slide. So this may require you to explain to me like I'm five, but the, if I'm correct in, in reading one of your models, the alternate three, which was open, open D and open E, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then close E before the storm starts?
Correct.
That resulted in the least amount of flooding? Am I understanding that correctly?
So the alternative, uh, alternative two included what you just described, as well as opening B, Sutton Pond.
Yep.
And so alternative two and alternative three had the same results from Ausgood Pond upstream.
Okay.
But whether or not Sutton Pond is opened or not, that only affects things downstream of Ausgood Pond, that C location, just, just due to the large elevation drop between the two.
Obviously, it's almost a falls there, right, or it is a falls?
Right.
So, so there's, it, it's almost like an upper and a lower area there. So while there might have been flooding or we're seeing flooding in the model at Sutton Pond, it doesn't affect the other areas, really.
So, so if I'm understanding it correctly, so in that scenario, so you, you drain them all out, create capacity downstream?
Yep.
You close E and essentially allow that to fill up?
And fill it back up, yeah.
And then holds that water from going downstream, so you have other capacity? That's why it's better than opening all and just letting it flow?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Because the more, there's a lot of capacity in, so E, Mill Pond Condominium, that, that has, that's connected to both Mill Pond and Stevens Pond, and so that's a pretty large storage area. So being able to hold back flow there helps to protect the more vulnerable area of the Machine Shop District.
So anyone would say, well, just remove all the dams and let it flow naturally? That's actually worse than having the ability to control the capacity, right?
It, in a way, yes. I would say if you just, if you just let all the water flow and, and kept all the, kept all the, um, the openings kind of the same size, so to speak, then yeah, it's, it's not as good as holding the water back. So just, you would think maybe, oh, just open everything up, let it all flow. Well, the water just reaches a pinch point at Machine Shop Pond because now you're flo, because you got all those pipes underground. And so there's a point there where it has to flow through those pipes, and this just, it's gonna reach a capacity at a big stop.
After that point, it would be better to let, like?
Yeah, and we, we leave everything open, yeah.
But after that, everything is all done.
Yep, yep. Yeah, it's, it's trying to hold.
You want to flow the flow to Machine Shop Pond.
Exactly, yeah. It's trying to hold that water back dur, just during a storm. Uh, you know, because we don't want to drain all your ponds. But in a, as a temporary measure, if you can do it. Now, all this stuff, we say this all with a caveat that this is all models, right? So it needs to be tried in the field. That's kind of the next step if we are gonna try this. It needs to be, we put together a sequence for this. You know, you see a storm, a big storm, whatever it is, nor'easter hurricane, something like that. The problem is, I think you're gonna have with the really small intense storms, is that sometimes you just don't know they're coming, right?
That's exactly, that's one of the things I wrote down. This is great, but if we don't know they're coming.
Yeah, those, those are still gonna be a little bit of a problem because it's gonna be tough to react to those, but with the, but with the big stuff.
If I may, there's one other issue that we have is the town doesn't own.
Thank you.
So we don't really have control. So we have, again, the boards that I mentioned, we have the hatch. The rest is private property, which, again, part of this now is, we have a good model. Now we can go and talk to the stakeholders and, you know, look at ways, and, and we've already had a lot of those discussions.
So outside of the pond, we don't own any, we, we don't own access to any of those spots along the way. So who would be responsible for removing boards and put, you know, doing all of that? Because it's not ours.
And that's where the issue becomes. So that's something that we need to spend more work on and look at and talk to the stakeholders and, you know, I think for the most part, people have been generally, you know, well to work with, they want to talk about this. When we talk about actually implementing some of these things, well, we're not really sure we're set up to do that sort of thing, so.
And then, yeah, there's room for them to allow us to do that, but that might not be.
Do, do towns set up license agreements with property owners to do this sort of thing in advance? Yeah, how's that typically done?
I think the good news is that we have people, a lot of these groups are bigger, like, so we know that RCG is at the table with us, right?
They have a vested interest in making sure that.
As does Mill Pond, right? Because they're actively doing work on theirs as well, so, you know, that part of it's good, but it, it's definitely gonna take a lot of coordination.
Yes.
The only one small item, and you guys can correct me if I'm misstating anything, is that, you know, when you're looking at Sutton Pond and Ausgood Pond in particular, you know, Ausgood Pond has had boards out as part of their compliance procedures with the Office of Dam Safety, and they just remain out. And Sutton Pond, the dam there, has boards in, and we've been having discussions for a little while now about whether or not we should be taking boards out to basically do something similar to what we've done at Ausgood Pond, which is lower that pond by a foot or two or however much to create more capacity there. But those systems are more or less like what I would describe as like more analog in, in style, like they're, when the boards are out, it's not hard, it's not, you know, it's a little bit of a process to put them back in. Whereas like the pond at Machine Shop Village, they have an automatic system where they can kind of raise it and, and lower it as they please in a more, you know, automated fashion. So they can be a little more nimble, reactive, proactive, whereas in a couple of locations, it's, yeah, exactly. And, and a couple of other locations, you're kind of deciding, do you want to take the boards out and kind of leave them out for the duration, or do you want to, you know, it's, it's hard to do it in this fashion, so there's challenges.
Kind of my next question is, like, if, since we don't know when storms are coming, right, is it more advisable to pre-plan and already lower some of these places that you would empty out beforehand and then just put backfill them with?
And know that we can fill.
And know that we, and know we have that capacity, rather than having to, oh, you know, oh no, a storm is coming in two days, it takes a while to drain these areas. Is it more advisable to drain them out?
I don't know. I think, I think that would be nice if you could do that. I think there's going to be environmental pushback for some of these things in terms of you're changing a habitat. It was, it's been a pond for so long. Yeah, maybe it was a stream at one point, but it's just been, you know, over 100 years now, it's been like this or close to probably 100 years, and that's something that needs to be figured out, is do you want to change that? It can be done.
Everything's trade-offs.
Yeah, it's tra, exactly, it's trade-offs. You know, safety versus environment, and it's not, it's a different type of habitat, that's all. And we do a lot of dam removals and all the time, you know?
Yeah. We, we also gave some recommendations in the report about size of storms where we want to take actions. So like, the, a total of five inches in 24 hours, that's a pretty large storm. And that's where we recommend that the, the town and the, the dam owners work together to start opening and closing these dams. And so the order of priority is Machine Shop Pond Dam, opening that, and then Mill Pond Condominium. That could, you could, you, you don't have to go to that one as often. We had recommendation of a, a 6.1-inch storm is where you want to start getting to that area. So when there is a good forecast that you could follow, there's some direction there.
I have a question about watershed improvements, right? So the overwhelming majority of that area is private land, right? So are there, are there programs you're aware of or anything else out there to help encourage private property owners to reduce some of this? You know, say you've got a paved driveway and you want to move it to more porous pavers, are there grants or those, or, or any other incentives out there to help get private owners to do that sort of thing? Do you understand the concept? You want to be a sponge before it just runs off, right?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And the more hardscape you have, the quicker it's gonna get, and the higher your peaks are gonna be, and that's what ends up causing your flooding.
We don't have a lot of spare land to just create capacity.
I agree.
I know you know.
You, you, a lot of communities, when they're dealing with this in urban landscapes, they try to do agreements, like, say you have a large parking area, they do agreements with those private property owners to put some kind of retention system in underneath that parking lot, and, you know, maybe that gets done by the town as an agreement, and, you know, they, they, I've seen them work it that way. I haven't seen too much funding on the private side, ju, except for just the regulations themselves and the stormwater regulations when you're actually doing development itself, you know? So I haven't, it's been slim pickings on the, on the private side. On the municipal side, there's a little bit more, but even municipal side, it's still tough to get funding.
And in your modeling, is there a recommended amount of acreage which we're shooting for, or is it every bit helps?
Every bit helps, and I think the more, I think you, you look at your, your areas that are closer to your flooding first and then work your way out from there. Yeah, yeah, any, any spots that we can think, and it just needs a more detailed look on those areas to start identifying some spots and coming up with real projects.
Did you review the dams for their, I don't know, like their, like if they need to be improved or like what they are currently is?
As far as like a, as a, as a structural analysis, we didn't do a structural analysis because that's, that's usually up to the, the dam owners, and this, this was more just the hydraulic study, looking at the openings and looking what you can adjust, but we didn't look at the structural parts of this now.
And if, I don't know, I guess you look at like if it's a bigger dam, it's more helpful, you know what I mean? Like is it, like if?
Yeah, if you have, if you have a larger dam.
Because it looks like Mill, that's gone. The Machine Shop ones are new and bigger, right?
Right, yeah. Machine Shop, they have a new outlet there, which is nice that they improved that. The, the wooden ones are just tough to operate. I mean, that's really the, the general.
Well, somebody has to be hitting it.
Yeah, yeah. And I think actually even the one in Sutton Pond, like the last board there is kind of permanently there unless it gets fixed. It's, you couldn't, you couldn't pull it out by hand right now, so they just, that's what happens to them if they just stay in for long enough, you know? Sediment builds up.
We don't want it.
Yeah, it's so, I mean, I, I, they're old, a lot of them are old, but.
Which is not uncommon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is the one at Sutton Pond Condos, it's still kind of the way it was two years ago?
Is dredging an option to create capacity?
Possibly, yep.
Close your ears, Andrew, I don't want to concomb here in this. But, I mean, if I think of like a large area of wetland, is, you know, could you?
I would say.
Habitat issues aside.
I would say, I would say dredging to almost like one of the alternatives I was showing where you're, it's almost like you're pulling down the land that's closer to your edges on your banks and creating more floodplain. That's where you're gonna see the impact, but dredging in the pond, the water level is already gonna be the water level, so no matter what you dredge below it, it's still gonna raise to that water level because it's blocked by the dam.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Other comments? This is really?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We really appreciate the time.
And we hope we never need it.
But we had a lot of rain last night, and we had, so it was a reminder of what could come.
Yep.
Yeah, it gave me a little bit of anxiety.
Thank you. All right, thank you all. Item E, a vote to waive the right of first refusal for 43 Kachikowick Drive at Unit 14. So pretty standard. We do this all the time. There are no questions, I will take a motion.
I'm going to select board waive the right of first refusal for the property located 43 Kachikowick Drive, Unit 14.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item F, a request from police chief to surplus three vehicles that would appear as though they've reached the end of their useful life. Will we auction them off or? We will auction them off. Perfect. Yeah. Any other questions?
Muni bid, will be a muni bid this once? Yeah, muni bid.
Muni bid, okay. Any other questions about that? If not, I will take a motion.
Motion to approve the request for the police chief to surplus three vehicles to be sold out.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item G, a request from the festival committee to use the town common and stage on September 7th, 2025. Item G, a request from the festival committee to use the town common and stage on September 7th, 2025 from 1 to, did they change that tonight?
They changed it to 8.
They changed the date. From 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM for Shakespeare in the Park event. That's super exciting. And from December 14th to 21, uh, 2025 for the menorah lighting and December 21st, 2025 for a community celebration.
As president of the North Endover Historical Society, I have no comment. I'm going to abstain on that vote.
I will get the select board approve the request from the festival committee to use the town common and stage on September 7th. Did you say 8? 7?
Uh, from, on September 7th from 1 to 8.
Oh, from 1:00 PM, 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM for Shakespeare in the Park and from December 14th to the 21st, 2025 for the menorah lighting and December 21st, 2025 for a community celebration.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item H, to confirm the town manager's appointment of Kate Kelly from associate to full member of the planning board.
Thank you. So Kate has been a associate member, um, for the last few months, maybe almost a year now. Um, if you remember correctly, she had, she joined us from Washington DC where she was in the Department of Commerce as executive director. Um, she had been the Department of Commerce for that as a senior energy policy specialist and had worked at the Attorney General's Office as a policy director. She's been a great addition to the committee.
Awesome. I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board confirm the town manager's appointment of Kate Kelly for the, from associate to full member of the planning board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to old business. Item A, the stop sign assessment for Green Street.
Madam Chair, I'll recuse myself.
They're going to go hang in the hallway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And obviously, um, DPW is here. He can speak much more eloquently on this than I can. But we have finished the initial inventory and assessment, uh, of the Green Street between Main Street and Mass Ave. The study does call for us to redo traffic counts, um, after school goes back. Although I did review some traffic counts from back in like 2021 and they were already very close to a thousand, um, or over a thousand depending on the day of the week. So, um, I'm sure that that's what we'll see when we look at it four years later. Um, but it did call for stop signs. Um, and if you are looking at the presentation, there is a recommendation which is on page four. Um, and it does call for stop signs, stop lines and crosswalks where Brad, West Bradstreet Road, Bradstreet Road, West Woodbridge Road and Woodbridge Road intersect Green Street. We do not need the board to vote on crosswalks, um, and really don't need you to vote on stop lines either, but we do need you to vote, um, to install stop signs, yes. Um, and we will, once school goes back, which is in just two weeks, uh, perform that midweek 48-hour automatic traffic recorder. Um, and we will correspond with the resident at 171 Green Street about his, um, limbs of his trees. Jim and John, am I missing anything?
Okay. Good confirmation.
What, I guess a couple of things. What, uh, rights do we have with regards to the, the pruning at 171 Green? Do we just have to ask nicely or?
There was a lot of that.
We usually just ask nicely. Um, if it's overgrowth into the public right of way, then technically we could trim it.
We still ask nicely.
But we still, we ask nicely first, yes. Um, but.
Friendly neighbors.
Yeah. Um, if it's pulled, it's in the right way, usually we can go ahead and try to trim it back.
And with regards to the fifth recommendation of those additional plaque signs, I assume those are the little ones that kind of go underneath the stop sign? Is that, can we take, okay. I'm seeing nodding for those of you at home. Okay. And do we have to vote on whether those get installed? No?
No, it's really just the stop signs, yeah.
Can we put one of those at the stop, you stop sign too?
We use a lot of them. Actually, that's a great idea.
From right, does it not stop?
Does not stop.
Except me, I always stop because I get confused.
I know. Anyway, sorry.
I, I do have a question. So these are recommendations, right? And I, you know, I, I think these recommendations fall squarely in line with statements made the last time we discussed it. There's nothing surprising here. I think I'm, I'm glad to see that the professionals are, are noting what I think all our eyes are telling us on this. Do we have any liability in the event we don't act on a recommendation like this, in your opinion?
I, I mean, I don't know what they think. It's, it's a recommendation, so from an engineer. Typically, we would follow them. That's why we, you know, go through this process of asking, um, the engineers what they think. What I would say is that typically, once we have documentation like this, if an accident did happen and then our insurance company asked about it, we, we could have increased issues, yes.
That's what I thought.
I don't know if they have anything to add, but that's what I would say.
It seems to make sense.
They agree.
So would the plan be to paint stop, stop, uh, lines and crosswalks?
So we would definitely put the stop lines. We'd, we would probably evaluate for crosswalks to make sure we have safe, um, entries and exits because we want to, we want to make sure that we have handicap accessibility.
Right. So thinking about that street, right? The crosswalks are really only going on one side of Green Street because there's no sidewalk on the side.
They would, yes.
Yeah, okay. Which, which I think makes sense.
Yes. We, we're very cognizant of the fact that we don't want to put crosswalks.
Sidewalk to sidewalk.
You don't want someone to get trapped at the end of the, at the end of the crosswalk.
Exactly right.
Uh, that's not ideal. So, um, they would, they would evaluate where they think the crosswalks would actually need to go. Um, but the stop signs are an easy, yeah, it was installation.
Okay, I, I thank you to, to John and to the consultants for, for this work. Uh, and, and I did one other question and, uh, Jim or John know the answer to this. With regards to the traffic study and you talk about the volumes of a thousand, but when I was reading the code, I think that's not just cars. That's also bikes and pedestrians, I believe, that, that can help trigger that. Am I mistaken in my reading of that?
I thought it was all rolling.
All rolling, so not pedestrians, but could be bikes.
I thought it was rolling.
Okay, okay. Which in a neighborhood like that, I mean, again, you can get to that pretty fast.
Lots of things are rolling, yeah.
Causing a problem, yeah.
Again, that, that asks a lot of, for not being engineers, a lot of engineering questions tonight, but, okay.
And we can report back, um, the findings of the traffic study once we get them.
But in the meantime, um, if there aren't other questions, I think I would like someone to make a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion. I would, uh, move that the select board authorize installation of stop signs, um, to stop signs. And I'll stop at the lines of crosswalks that where West Bradstreet Road, Bradstreet Road, West Woodbridge Road and Woodbridge Road intersect Green Street.
Okay, I have a motion.
As, as recommended by the consultant.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you both. Makes sense. Actually, yeah, yeah. Everything we talked about is, is true.
Hopefully I read that right, but yeah, yeah.
So this is a good move. All right. Moving on to consent items, um, we'll wait for them to sit. All right. So, um, can I update? We did vote to install stop signs at the recommended, um, what the report recommended, at the places that the report recommended.
The only thing I have to be, I heard.
We shouldn't talk about it though. We can't talk about it. Because you're accused. I don't want you to get yourself in trouble. Yeah. We don't want to want that. We did so good to not get in trouble. Yeah. So, uh, we're going to move on to consent items. Uh, we can take all of them together to accept a donation to the fire department, the amount of $100 from Diane Scully, um, a donation to the fire department, the amount of $150 from Keith and Nancy Mitchell, and to accept a grant in the amount of $60,000 from Massachusetts Broadband Institute for the purchase of Chromebooks for the North Endover Public Schools. That's fairly exciting. Claro, so Zach.
How come we're accepting it, not the schools?
Uh, because we put the application in, yeah.
Good question. It's a very good question.
$60,000 more, open schools, it's good.
All right. Any other questions?
I move the select board accept all consent items if you're accepting a motion.
I am.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with our thanks, as usual.
Thanks, Zach.
Okay, um, next item is the approval of minutes, the open session minutes of July 14th, 2025. Has everybody looked at them?
I have.
Any questions, comments, changes? All right, I will take a motion.
Motion. I move that the, uh, select board approve the open session minutes from July 14th, 2025. It seems like a long time ago.
It really does. I have a motion. And a second. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to select board updates. Anybody?
Uh, a week from tomorrow, the hut at Rogan's Field, uh, there'll be a ceremony dedication at the turn of 5:45 for Bobby Albert at Rogan's Field.
I can't believe how much work they've done at the high school.
It's pretty cool.
It's amazing, exciting.
Yes, it's fun to drop kid, you know, when you go in and out.
Yeah.
Although sometimes I'm like, I don't know, it doesn't look like they've done anything. There's still dirt everywhere. Big piles. But I can't wait for the finished product.
Main Street looks great. They're making a lot of progress.
Yes. Other.
And before our next meeting, which the kids all welcome back to school.
Oh, that's before our next meeting. Wow.
Is that true?
It is.
Goes far as asked.
So Farmer's Market's still going strong. Come visit us behind Town Hall. It's been a great location.
I think that is a great location.
Yeah, it's been really great.
It's safe because it's all kind of enclosed.
Parents love it. The kids can run around, they can go in the street. So, that's all I have. All right, um, town managers report.
Couple of quick things. Um, we have locked in our electricity rate from October 2025 through October 2028. Um, I know it's a long one, but we got a good rate and the advice was to go with it. So we're at .138. Um, just for national grid right now is at .154 for their summer rate. So, um, you want to be, if you're not currently in the program, you want to be in the program. Uh, we are finishing Main Street. Um, so the 18th, 19th and 20th will be doing our overnight work. So please be aware of that. There will be travel delays. Um, and additionally, um, we're asking cars not to, not to park there from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Um, the Chikering Road overpass to the high school is going to be closed on the 15th and the 16th because we're doing some repairs on it.
That's fantastic.
Yes, so, um, it will reopen on the 17th.
Happy to hear that.
Yes, but don't, we want to keep everybody off of it on Friday and Saturday. Uh, the middle school is finished and under budget by $185,000. So thanks to that committee. That's amazing and we're very excited about that. Um, we have a lot happening. Laurie got a great new Greaton Communities grant for a heat pump system at the old senior center, $225,000. So we're excited about that. I told you about Zach. Um, Dee just received $30,000 in Maya Flex Grant Awards for training and equipment. And then, um, we wanted to thank the police department for a great national night out. And then we have just a couple of, uh, employee recognitions. People have been emailing and recognizing employees, either people in their own departments or, um, people in the public. And so Sabine in HR, we received an email about her prompt and professional assistance from her retiree, which is really nice to see.
That's great.
And Dave Rodear was recognized by his, um, director for his strong work resolving some ongoing issues at the public safety. And then we have in here just an update on the opioid settlement fund. So you could see kind of what we're doing with those and how we're using them. Um, we are doing the first year of the Breathe Program, which is a social emotional program at the schools for 68,000. We have, um, two years of our case manager at the police department paid for. And then we are rolling out, a few more things too, but we're rolling out a new program, community-wide called Care Sola. You'll be seeing that over the next couple of weeks. It's a mental health services program for residents, employees and businesses where you can call at any time. The school has already used it. And so it's being rolled out to everyone else. Um, and you are able to get in with a therapist in a very short period of time. It will all be free for the community. And then finally, we're starting a survey, working with Andover about how people want to see these opioid funds used.
It's really a ton going on.
It's been a busy summer.
All good things, all those things, like, yeah. Thank you. All right, our next meeting is September 8th, 2025. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move, second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.